This conference will now be recorded. We are being recorded. First thing on the agenda is the agenda itself. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Okay, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone have anything?
I may.
I just have a question.
Sure, Roseanne. Go ahead.
I just want to know along, when in the process would you want to take comments from members of the public? I just want to know, and maybe you're going to say that, so just so we don't interrupt your proceedings.
Like throughout the evening, like throughout the agenda?
Yes, I mean, are you going to say now, now I want it from the public, or do you want to just raise our hand as, as things go on? I don't know what your intent is, as far as hearing from the commissioners first and then the public, or?
Yeah, so that was what I had in mind. I know the commissioner's been thinking about the things on the agenda, so I was going to see if anyone had anything to say, and then I'll, I'll ask if there's items from the public as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Ray?
I would like to actually speak now, because I'm going to talk, it's a follow-on from the last meeting, last planning commission meeting. It's related to the agenda, but I would rather later speak as a resident rather than as a member of the natural resources committee.
Okay.
Any objections to that anywhere? Okay, so the last meeting, I mentioned that one of our priority items on our work plan was habitat connectivity. We currently have two groups on our committee ready to identify and map and verify connecting wildlife corridors on habitat blocks, whether they're the priority blocks or not. We have a plan and we'll begin working about a week. You may have gotten an email today that details that plan. We're hoping to be able to assign a priority to the things that we do map, similar to the level one and level two resources, but not really level one, level two resources, just for the importance of that particular connector. Some, some plan analogous to that. The result would necessarily be a satellite map based on city maps. In other words, it would be mapped, mapped to city maps, but your best view of it and the way to understand it is on satellite photographs. And we're hoping to complete that by early February or mid-February. Now, if we don't get all done that we would like, still doesn't matter. Anything, in my opinion, is better than having just three connectors on the current city maps. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, well, thanks, Ray. I think that's a really good intro and update from your committee and kind of does lead into our discussion for tonight. So I think the next thing on the agenda, which I should, I'm juggling here, is announcements and staff report. Do we have any announcements from, from any members? Or staff report?
Just two quick things for you, FYIs, for things that other committees are working on. In the next couple of meetings, you're going to likely see a recommendation from the Affordable Housing Committee on some modifications to match our regulations to the new state laws that have come in regarding accessory dwelling units and small lots and things like that. They're working through some, some fine detail things so that they can give you a recommendation in January on that. And the Energy Committee is considering a proposal to have this, the city adopt the sort of stretch standards to the commercial building code. And it's, it's sort of odd the way that the, let the, the state updated their commercial code this year. There is no technical stretch code this year in theirs, but they have sort of an add-on that municipalities can choose. And so they're looking at that, and we scheduled them coming on January 12th to talk with you about that. So just two quick FYIs of things that are going to be coming your way in the next little while.
Great, then I think we can get started with our main item, the continued review of the land development regulation changes, which is a continuation from the last meeting. And I think if members of the public could turn their camera off until they're trying to get our attention to contribute, it might be, it's helpful for me to be able to kind of monitor the screen. Okay, so one of the things that we left off with was, you know, we heard, we heard a little bit from both Monica and Michael on some changes that they were interested in. I don't know if anyone else had any kind of overviews or general thoughts kind of before we kind of jumped into the specifics that others have suggested. You know, I just want to make sure that other commissioners also had kind of an opportunity, if they had something else they wanted to kind of bring up in general or an overview to general thoughts on proposed changes, anything like that. Ted?
Just, um, good thing, I'm sort of looking through the side, the side here, something we got from Paul at the end of the day. I don't know if anyone's had its chance to look at an EFA background paper on the stream buffers and recommended distances from embankments and so on. I don't know, that's something that we're going to discuss, add to our discussion, or do we have to wait on that? You know, I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to read it. Right?
Were those the two letters from the community, or was there something else, Ted?
Just looking at my email, and it was from Paul. What it's called, the need for stream buffers. And it just, it was helpful to me, because I don't know if it should be 10 or 100 feet, frankly. And this was a, an analysis.
Yeah, I think that was an attachment to one of the letters that Paul forwarded, either from Daniel Saff or Andrew Chalnick.
It was from Andrew Chalnick, if I have to go back to my email, but I'm pretty sure that, yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure.
I would think that, you know, that would be part of our discussion when we talk about Michael's recommended changes to the buffers. I know kind of from a high-level thought, you know, I'm kind of with Ted. I don't have any specific concerns as far as what the buffers are and whether they're 100 or 300 or whatever. I just want to be consistent with if there's any state or federal standards. I want to make sure that people understand where the buffer is measured from, and I think it's top of bank, but that impacts things. And then, you know, just whether there's, you know, scientific basis for whatever it turns out to be in this paper might help inform that. But that's kind of what I'll be looking for in the discussion as, as we home in on that, is, you know, making sure we're consistent with regulations and, and good science.
Duncan?
Yeah, I apologize. I did not see that letter. I don't know if I just didn't open that email, or, but I did not see it. It would have been helpful, I guess, if I'd read it. But my, my question kind of has to do with what Bernie was talking about, the, the figures that are in Article 12 prior to Michael's proposed adjustments. Are those figures, again, from Ohio, is, are those figures we drew from the state regulations? I just kind of wanted to get a background on that before we... I just wondered, where, where did they, you know, the 100-foot buffer, where, is that something the state mandates? And where did they come up with that? So on the subject of wetlands, Duncan, generally speaking, our standards mirror those that the state has for class one and class two wetlands and the, and their buffers. We in South Burlington regulate class three, which are the very smaller, small wetlands and their buffers. That is not regulated by the state. The Federal Army Corps of Engineers does regulate class three wetlands when it comes to a project that exceeds their threshold, which I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica, but I think it's an acre of, of wetland disturbances when their threshold gets triggered, and, but they do not regulate buffers. On streams, I believe that our standards are sort of consistent with how other communities and the state have looked at it, but I don't know that they're drawn directly from them. The 50 feet from, from smaller streams and 100 feet from the larger ones. But maybe Jessica or Bernie, you'd know that a little bit more than I would.
No, I would look to, I mean, Jessica's kind of the expert on that. I don't have any, you know, anything to add, I guess, other than, like I said, just to be consistent with what there is. And, and I know that, you know, where you measure from also, you know, plays into that as well, so.
Yeah, so we have updated our regulations in this draft to update where we're measuring from our old regulations or our current regulations, measured from the center line out from that buffer. So we're actually proposing to measure from the, the top of the bank. So we are actually proposing a wider buffer, because we're, we're kind of excluding the stream itself from that width. And then, you know, it seems pretty consistent, the, the 50 feet is a, is a relatively consistent number as a stream buffer for state regulations. That's what they use for the river corridor width. In an Act 250 review, Fish and Wildlife is often recommending a 100-foot buffer on larger streams. But, you know, there isn't really a parallel, like with wetlands, it's a really consistent, like buffer length that's applied throughout the state, but a lot of the buffers are really town by town rather than a state regulation. So I don't know of towns in the state that regulate more than a 50-foot, but I mean, that might, I might just not know of some.
But we already build a little bit of, of buffer into that, because we're measuring from top of bank. So, you know, again, depending on what the stream cross-section is, you know, there could be a pretty large buffer if, if the, if the stream has a a floodplain that's, you know, relatively flat on both sides of the stream, and then the bank goes up beyond that. So, anyway, go ahead, Michael.
My, my suggested buffers, 300 feet, 100 feet, 50 feet, are suggested because when the, other, the other buffer dimensions were established, we didn't know a hell of a lot about what was, what the climate was going to deliver to us. And so I'm, I've been guided by what's, what's happened in, in recent years and what we can expect, so that we provide protection, which is, which is valid in today's and tomorrow's conditions. I mean, you know, we repair in buffers, do all kinds of other things besides just protect us from floods and, and so on. They, you know, they provide shading for some streams, which keeps the temperature down. You know, larger volume will reduce, rather than large buffer, it will reduce volumes of overland flows entering streams. They trap sediments associated with pollutants upstream. You know, they maintain stable stream banks if you allow enough width for, for fluctuations in flow. And, you know, maintain habitat requirements for many aquatic and other terrestrial species, if you like. And they provide corridors for the movement of, of these species, you know, through the landscape. So it's this, this, that, and to some extent, the guidance from Arrowood or the recommendations from Arrowood for 300 feet or 100 meters. There's some use feet and other times they use meters, but same, is what, is what has guided me. And I think we should adopt these, what you might call them, strict which helps to provide us with greater resilience and greater protection, because this is, Article 12 is about protection. That's my feeling about it. And, you know, I have, I have obviously got strong feelings about, about, about nature and, and its protection. I think it's invaluable to us. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not guided or backed in any way by what we, what we, what we used to do or what the state might have mandated. I'm guided by what we should do.
Monica?
Well, Jessica, can I just ask what you want the process to be tonight? It's already 7:20, and we've got a lot, big, this is our dedicated meeting to Article 12. And I'd just like to understand what, how the flow should go here, because I, I mean, I have comments on like 12.01B. And we haven't even gone to the document yet.
I know I wasn't su, I tried to be clear. So right now, I really want, if anyone else has other things they want to also add to the discussion. So, I mean, I think we started, we heard some things from other people. And, and then I think we want to start to go through the actual details of the recommended changes. So if anyone else has anything that's kind of higher level or general impressions before we jump into the like, kind of line-by-line suggested changes, now would be the time. And then...
I think, as Jessica, as Monica suggested, start 12.01B and work our way down.
Right, so I, the reason that I did this, Michael, is because both you and Monica have like, kind of voiced some different things. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anyone else before we got into the details of, of your suggestion. So, so it does sound like we are ready to do that, kind of go a little bit more line-by-line of some suggestions. And it does seem like we made, we've already have been talking a little bit about the buffers. That may start with the...
Will, do Monica's suggestions appear in another document that we?
They're actually in the same document as yours. They are combined with yours, and they're in our packet.
There is also one that isn't there that I mentioned in, I think, the last meeting, but I didn't put down in writing, and that's the one that's in that chart at 12.01, so.
Okay, and the other one that you mentioned that isn't in the text is because it's not really text. It was the map you presented at the last meeting, and I actually do think that might be the first place to start. Because I know Paul has kind of followed up with Jens Hilke about the, you had had two black lines on the map as potential additional connectors.
Yeah. Can I actually suggest, Jessica, and Paul, maybe, is it more appropriate to just talk about that when we get to the connectors section, because they're...
Okay? That's completely fine, yeah. That makes complete sense.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we can just start to go through the suggested changes as they appear in the document.
Can I mention this one that's in the 12.1, because it's not listed there?
Yes.
So if you're looking at 12.01B, it's, we have this table, and I think the table is great, but I still have a concern, and then seeing some of the letters from the community that were shared, I just wanted to understand what we're going to do here. If you look at level one resources, it says habitat blocks, and then it, under the column, buildable area, it says no. And habitat connectors, it says buildable area, no. So that seems like a very clear statement, while, in fact, we have some parameters for that. So I, I just feel like I love the chart, but I'm concerned that it might be oversimplifying and perhaps contradictory, or that this may be the thing that someone in the community will be able to hold on to, perhaps rightfully, and is, you know...
Well, when we get into the, into the detail of what's, what's, what you're saying to know, when we get down to that particular paragraph covering a habitat block or a habitat connect?
Well, my, my issue is just what, let's keep in mind what, that what we're putting in this chart may be the only thing that some people read and, and have a picture of what their expectations are. And I'm, I worry that maybe this chart, as great and clear and simple as it is, it might be oversimplifying some things. So, yeah, maybe, to your point, we come back to it at the end, but I don't know if Paul or Jessica has a thought on what we do about that.
I guess, I guess I'd say, Monica, your point is taken, and I agree with Michael that let's, let's come back to it, but I'll make a note that it should be clear to the extent possible. You know, it's, it's, it's always a battle between being clear and being thorough.
Yeah, I mean, when we get down to, it's, it gives us the section, like, when we talk about habitat blocks, we're going to be in 12.05 and connectors in 12.06. I think there's a fair amount of detail in there, but we, we can come back to it then.
Okay. Then I guess we'll scroll down to the next piece.
Just one question for you, Jessica. This version that I have up here sort of accepts all the changes that staff had put forward, so this is not a red line from the current regulations. Would you prefer to see something that is showing the changes in the current rules? I know that those haven't necessarily been approved or accepted by the planning commission.
But, okay, but this is the draft of the new rule.
This is the draft, and the markups in it are Michael and Monica's edits, but it is not the, it is not showing the changes from the current adopted rules.
Okay.
So I'm happy to show that. I'm also happy to just sort of have it available if anybody wants to review it at any moment.
Yeah, I, I think we should look at it separately, otherwise we're going to get bogged down. We're going from one to the other. How do you feel about that, Jessica?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that this is the easiest way to do this. I mean, I think we've, for, you know, eight months now, been looking at what the red line is. And now we want to focus on these proposed potential additional changes to that. Okay, so we did already start to talk about the stream, the concept of the bigger thing buffer. Michael introduced it last meeting. I, I know that maybe not everyone got to read all of the public feedback we got, but we got three different pieces of public input by email just today with various things they were saying. But I know two of them did talk about the buffers, which is what Duncan, I think, was bringing up earlier, actually on TED, about the, the attachment and how there is some research that was in there.
Can I ask a question about all of this? What, how does, how does the 500-year flood line that we're adding impact these waterways anyway? Isn't that naturally going to be increasing the, you know, the protected area?
In some cases, Monica, the 500-year floodplain does extend wider than the current, than the current buffers of 50 or 100 feet. It's not necessarily every case, but it is in some cases. If at any point commissioners would like us to map any of what's in this proposal, we're happy to do that. I haven't put the RPC onto that yet, but if you'd like to look at that at a mapping analysis, we can absolutely do that.
It's, my suggestion is just if the 500 flood, based on science and other, you know, resources, provides us with more protection that's more directly related to other sources, that may be easier than, you know, selecting these different numbers independent. So, but I, but I'm open to what everyone's thought.
Yeah, so I think, Monica, that, and please, Jessica, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I think it's almost kind of like apples to oranges. The 500-year flood zone is, is kind of what, where the topographic line, where it's anticipated that the water's going to be at a 500-year flood, whereas these numbers are based on measuring from the top of the bank. So if you had a stream and it only had a one-foot bank, you know, it may flood and, and go a long ways from the edge of the bank. If you had a stream with, you know, a steep bank that was 10 or 15 feet high, the 500-year flood could remain within the cross-section of the stream. So they're kind of independent, I think.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with that. And Michael, before we hear from you more, I think just the concept of all, many of these lines or areas that we're talking about overlap. So we have the stream buffers, we have the 500-year floodplain, which is a new area, which is really to protect against flooding and create an area for flood storage. And there are other associated benefits with flood storage and floodplains, you know. And then we also have recently protected the river corridor, which is another area around streams. And its main focus is focused around the erosion hazard, where the river might migrate around to. And so like that river corridor and the 100 and 500-year floodplains and these stream buffers overlap, because they're all surrounding the stream, and they've all been defined with some varying goals, you know, whether it's the extent of flooding or the extent of erosion or, or a protective zone measured just horizontally, where we want to have no development and, and forest area for a wide variety of reasons. But, you know, their benefits overlap too. So, you know, if we have a wider stream buffer, it would be an area where water would filter before it gets to the stream, as well as provide habitat and linkages for wildlife, as well as provide, the elevation is low enough. And so I think, you know, Bernie and Michael are right, that there are all these varying benefits. And, you know, I think that, I didn't, I didn't read in great detail the paper that, that Ray sent, but I actually did look up a few other articles, research articles about buffers. And, and there is a wide range of, you know, one I was reading last night, you know, it listed maybe 20 or 30 different stream functions, whether it was to protect fish, pro, you know, keep temperature low due to shading, provide wood inputs for habitat. You know, all these different functions, provide flood storage, water quality by filtering water before it gets all the way down to the stream. You know, so there's all these different benefits that these areas provide. And there's, you know, hundreds of research articles that provide different numbers on like, what they think the number of the buffer width might be to provide that function. So, like, even though this is my area of expertise, like, I don't know exactly what the perfect number is. Like, you can find a research article that says a 300-foot buffer for various things. You also find some that just say, just protect the 100-year floodplain and you're good, you know. Or, or, you know, there are quite a few articles that, that center around this 100-foot or, or 50-foot, which is 100 feet total, but 50 feet on either side. But, you know, very few articles talk about the intermittent streams, I think is another thing to point out. So I don't know exactly what the number should be, but I do think we should definitely measure from the top of the bank. And I do think we should be overlapping all these different areas, because like Bernie said, in some spots, the floodplain might be very wide, because the land is low. We want to make sure to get that area. Or some area might be very... Or some area might be very steep and tall and prone to erosion. And we want to make sure we get that area with the river corridor. So Monica?
Well, and mapping that wouldn't really be possible, right? Because we don't have the depth of all of the, like this isn't, Paul couldn't just adjust our, our hazards layers to reflect the 300 versus, because if we go to the 300, that's going to be actually covering a lot of our habitat block as well. I mean, which is not a bad thing.
Right, realistically, Monica, what we could probably do from a mapping exercise fairly easy is 300 feet from the center line of the stream, which I know is not the standard that you're looking at here, or 100 feet, or whatever the distance you want to do. I know you're doing top of bank, but that's not something that we probably have easily mapped, unless I'm, unless I'm wrong, Jessica. I don't think that that data exists. That has to be sort of field verified.
It might exist for the Winuski, because there is mapping of the river edge for the very large rivers in Vermont.
Okay.
Just for any of the other streams.
Even if there's a simplified way of visualizing what happens when we go from the 100 to the 300, because it, it may be quite substantial and, oh, or it may already be right where we are with our habitat blocks. So not asking for more acreage than what we're already doing with the draft beneath this red. So if it, if it, it might be helpful to see the 300 feet in, in whatever form, even if it's an estimated.
One thing that would be helpful to me would be, and maybe Michael can spend just a couple of minutes. I guess, you know, I'll be honest, one of the, one of the issues I had was that it seemed like, you know, the, the increase in numbers were, for lack of a better term, a little bit arbitrary. And so, you know, I guess what I would want to know from, from Michael is just kind of, you know, what, you know, the basis for the numbers are. And, you know, kind of back to Jessica's point, you know, that, you know, there's a lot of literature out there and, and, you know, I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other as far as what the buffers are. You know, I didn't have a problem with the 100, but, you know, if, you know, Michael, you've done some research and, you know, the 300 is based on, on, you know, something that you've, you've read. I would certainly be interested to know what the basis is of that for the 300, what your increases.
There, there obviously, as, as Monica has, I mean, as Jessica has just said, there's tons and tons of research papers out there. But I was looking at, looking to Arrowood because that's specific to South Burlington. And their recommendations are specific to our, to our area, our town, Burlington, South Burlington, or Greater South Burlington, if you want to put it that way. So that's where I, where I took the recommendation from Arrowood on the 100 meter or 300-foot buffers. The secondary, since they, they increased them by two-thirds over, or three times what we had, the, the, the 100-foot and the 50-foot were, were arbitrary and less than, uh, just less than three times the, the base that we had. So except in the case of the, uh, with a land within 10 feet horizontal distance from the top of a, of a bank or slope, that I just took 50 feet, that was arbitrary. The other, the number, item two that I took as being reasonable and not, but, but arbitrary, just to get a larger, I'd just like to go back to.
And the 300 was from the Arrowood report though, Michael?
Yes, but two Arrowood reports, actually.
Okay, thank you.
And the, but I, I don't think we, we ought to not get confused with the flood plains because the 100-year flood plain and the 500-year flood plain is, is primarily to protect life and property, uh, not necessary, not necessarily natural resources. We're looking at natural resources here. If they overlap, well and good, because that might provide extra, but it's not, I don't think it's necessarily, necessarily part of our conversation. We've talked about flood plains last, last meeting and we'll have to get back to it again. But for now, I think we should just focus on, on natural resource protection or environmental protection. Am I right about that, Jessica?
Actually, no, there's, there's new national thinking even in the just last few years where FEMA themselves are actually recognizing the ecosystem benefits of riparian flood plain areas for, for habitat and, um, you know, flood refuge for, for fish who need to get out of the channel and recreation values. So it's, it's actually been interesting how people have really been revising their thinking of not just a flood area, but all those other things that go along with it.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if, if the question of this 300, if there are, if there's support for 100 and there's support for 300, one strategy we could follow is start with the 300 and watch for the community feedback on it, knowing that, and acknowledging to the public that, you know, we, there are these different resources that are, some are saying 100 and some are saying 300. And if we put the 300 out and it versus all the other protections we have, it's not making a, a significant impact on anyone's concerns, then, you know, then, then great. So let's hope.
So can I just ask a question? So this is for major streams. So what do we consider, two questions? What do we consider major streams? And then two, is since it's from the top of the bank, um, you know, you measure from each side. So you're talking about a 600-foot wide, um, protected area around a major stream. So, you know, if, if the major stream is just the Winuski, that's, you know, maybe not so bad. If the major stream includes, you know, Potash Brook and all those other things, and, you know, 600 feet's pretty wide. So, um, maybe that's a question to start or.
Bernie, that a major stream is defined as the Winuski River, the Muddy Brook, and the main stem of the Potash Brook. The main stem is.
Right where it says in the last sentence.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
The main stem is the one that essentially leads up through the Mayfair Park, along Kimball Avenue, and then takes a dip southward under the interstate. I can show that on a map if anybody wants to see that too.
I guess, um.
No, this was just a Bernie reading problem.
I am interested in seeing the 300-foot buffer on these really large streams. And I don't know if, it seems like that might be nice mapping to see. The other ones, the 50-foot and the 10-foot, I'm, I don't know. I guess I'm, I'm not convinced that the intermittent streams need that much more buffer. Like it, just based on, you know, all the walking of small streams I've seen, but, um, so, so I don't know. I don't know if other people want to see more, or if we want to. I know we had gotten some public comment on this as well. Um, Duncan?
Yeah, I was going to echo what you just said, and I think Monica mentioned it too. It would be really nice to see the difference between the 100-foot and the 300-foot on these three bodies of water, streams. And actually, I, I would also, I guess I'm okay with increasing the buffer. We think, if we think it's necessary on the intermittent streams, I guess I'm, I'm kind of with you, Jessica. I'm not sure that that's, I, I don't, I'm not sure I see the justification for that. The larger ones, I could be okay with the 50 to 100. But it would be nice to see the difference in those two buffers.
Yeah, I would want to see both one and two and see what the impact is.
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, uh, I was called to the property of Noah, Noah Hyman, after we'd had a major rain event. And, because he, he knows I'm interested in, in this. And that's an intermittent, I believe it's an intermittent stream that comes all the way down through the golf course. And he showed me that, that, that rain event had increased the, the width way beyond any buffer that we might consider now. Probably, if I remember correctly, probably four or 500 feet wide swath of water. The other thing is also that on, on the item one, there are going to be places along the, along Potash Brook or Muddy Brook, where the 300-feet buffer, buffer, it's, it's not available. You know, there's, there's no space and we'll have to put up with, with a, a narrower buffer. But in general, uh, that, I think that's what we should aim for. You know, the, the part of Potash Brook that goes through East Woods, for example, yeah, you could find 300 feet on each side, but elsewhere, um, the parts that come down parallel to Kennedy, you might have it, but you might not. So that's going to be variable, but the target, I think, should be 300 feet.
So are we seeing our next step is to request a viewing of one and two?
Sorry, what did you say?
Are we, is our next step that we're going to ask if we can see the mapping of one and two to understand, um, before we make any?
Yeah, that's what I was hearing. I do know we did get some public feedback and we've gotten a couple of things in the chat. And I know that, um, some people had asked when the public could weigh in. Since we've kind of talking about this semi-discrete concept of buffers, I wanted to see if there's any public input on this specific section in addition to the, the support for the wider buffers that we've already received by email from David Saff or Daniel Saff and Ray Gonda. Any other public feedback? I know there were a couple of things in the chat. Dan, did you want to ask your question now? I know you asked.
No, I mean, I don't want to derail this conversation about.
We can wait for that. Roseanne, I, I know you said that you had something that was maybe a little overarching. Did you want to?
Yes, uh, thanks, Jessica. And this is not about any of the specifics that you're talking about here. And actually Sandy Dooley just posted something in the chat, which I echo. And that is, and, and I'm not going to, I'm trying to make this as short as possible. First of all, I, I do want to thank all of you, all the commissioners, all the city staff for all the time and effort you're putting into this. I, I think this is one of the most important things the planning commission can do. We're talking about science here and science, especially those who are experts in the environmental science, are telling us that, I don't want to short this, shorthand it, but nature can save us. I mean, if we keep our trees and our wetlands and our grasslands and our meadows and even our soil, they sequester carbon, they purify our air, our water. I mean, that's in the preamble, the paragraph that you talk about in this incredibly important article that deals with environmental protection. So when we're talking about being in a climate crisis that we are in right now, every effort should be made to save as much as we can, because if we save it, it will save us. Go with the science. Right now, we're learning more because climate change is accelerating far rap, far more rapidly than we, than we ever expected, that's science, ever expected. So what I'm hoping the planning commissioners will do is to take an aggressive approach to protecting the environment. That, there's no higher priority. If, if we don't have air, water and clean soil, we're, we're done for. So I have one concern about what is written in, in your article 12. It's in the second paragraph, right up front. Your first paragraph says it all. I wish you could add climate change in there, that we're doing this not because, you know, we love beautiful things, which of course we knew, we, we do and we need for our soul, but, but that it's imperative for the survival of our city and our planet. And all great things start at the local level. But in paragraph two, after you say these great things in paragraph one, in paragraph two, you say, yeah, but other provisions in our LDRs could supersede these. Uh, and specifically, you're talking about PUDs and, and subdevelopments. Well, wait a minute, then that might be that everything you're talking about right now could be just thrown off if there happens to be another provision in the LDRs that deals with a development. So I, I think that's a, one, it, it counteracts, I think, what I'm hoping you are doing. But secondly, it starts a very murky process in, so what takes precedence? And, um, and could engender controversy and lawsuits in the future. So anyway, uh, thank you so much for doing this. Please keep up the effort of, please don't go back to business as usual. Please consider that we're talking about saving our planet. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Roseanne. Dan, were you?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just to echo some of those comments, but a little different vein. Natural resource protections are of course one measure. We also have to think about land use patterns. And the lack of mixed-use housing and commercial blended in with residential is, is a challenge. Because we have, we have large portions of our community that are not, of residential units that are not near any, um, commercial activities, whether it's a bank or a post office or the store or things like that. So we have to, in some ways, we're trying to catch up on natural resource protections. And we also should think about potentially retrofitting neighborhoods so people don't have to drive to Shelburne Road, my neighborhood, every time they want to get something. So just keep that in mind too. It's a, it's a, it needs many measures to fight global warming and thinking about land use patterns and where people choose to live or drive from to get where they need to go is something to keep in mind. So, thanks.
That's a great point. Do I see someone else from the public pop up? Did you have a comment as well?
Yes, Janet Bellavance. Thank you, um, commissioners, for all your work on article 12. And I've been listening to much of your rich conversations. Uh, my comment is related to, kind of connected to what Paul Connor was saying about being clear and being thorough. You want to do that? And I'm wondering specifically, um, how this environmental perception standards, how they are addressing the Open Space Committee report and the 25 high-priority parcels. I'm just thinking if the planning commission, um, you know, charged Open Space Committee to prioritize existing open spaces, forest blocks, working landscapes. I'm reading directly from the report in South Burlington in the sustenance of our natural ecosystem, scenic view shed and river corridors. And that, that report identified and prioritized the protection and conservation of important tracts of land that warrant special attention and are prioritized for protection. How would they, I don't see them referenced in this report or mentioned, and just wondering your thoughts about that. If the city council wanted to know what, what are high-priority parcels that have significant natural resources? It seems like this would be the article that those would be named and identified in.
Yeah, that's a good point. So Bernie said on our committee, said on that committee for us. And, um, you know, I think one thing that's interesting or a little different about the land development regulations is that we don't necessarily go parcel by parcel, and, and especially in this specific part where we're really talking about the resource themselves. So we're really talking about the stream and an area around the stream or, um, you know, a habitat area based on, on forest. And, um, so it's really about delineating on the land, the resource themselves, regardless of like where, um, the parcel lines are. So it's a little bit different how this is approached. And I know that the city council does have that, um, open space report and, um, you know, can prioritize potential purchases based on that or other things.
But Jessica, can I also add that our entire new section of the habitat blocks is absolutely. it absolutely parallels the open space priorities. They, they completely overlap, but to Jessica's point, they focus on the resource there. But by adding the habitat block beyond just water, um, it is the complement to that open space report, but just looking at it from a resource base, not a lot line base.
Yes, thank you. That helps me understand it and I understand that. I, I was just surprised that it wasn't referenced at all. Um, not that they actually have to be delineated, but that that report would be maybe even referenced.
Um, Paul, do you want to?
Uh, I think just to echo what Monica said, that the, the work that the open space committee had done, um, helped inform the decision of the planning commission to hire Arrowwood to look at blocks. Um, and, and that's what has led to the forest block, um, proposal in here. Uh, as Jessica said, it's important that when we look at regulatory tools, we can't look on a parcel by parcel basis. It has to be based on the resources or the economic conditions or the transportation. It, it can't go parcel by parcel because, um, zoning has to be blind ownership. But it can look at the underlying resources that led the open space committee to be, um, identifying certain key parcels. And so that's, that's the linkage between these two, these reports. Or the report and this.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I understand that, that it definitely shouldn't, um, identify specific tracks. So are you saying that the regulations that you're, you know, cause I've read through that. I've spent the time reading in the comments. And so are you saying that that report has informed you so that the modifications to this article 12 would, um, cover all of those parcels or would protect them?
No, I wouldn't say all of, because the report and, um, Bernie, feel free to jump in here. But the report said that they used for the open space committee was that they looked at parcels in their entirety. And if they contain some level of natural resources, that gave them a, a, a ranking. This is specific to the resources themselves and not necessarily the entirety of parcels. So if a parcel is 40 acres in size and it had 10 acres of forest areas, then the 10 acres of forest areas were, are, are identified in here and whatever wetlands. But if there's 30 acres of land that is not identified as a natural resource, then that would be for the city council to have the option to think about other tools in the toolbox like acquisition. If they wanted to, um, prioritize, um, conservation of, of additional land beyond what this article would prioritize.
Yeah, Paul, I'll just weigh in. You, I mean, that's exactly what the, um, the committee, um, did was, um, scored the, the properties based on resource. Um, so obviously a, a property that had more resources. So if it had a stream and a wetland and a forest, you know, it would have ranked higher, um, in terms of recommendation for, um, protection than, um, you know, a property that maybe had, you know, a stream crossing through one corner of it. So the scoring would have been different. But in terms of our regulations, our regulations take into account, um, all of the resources that were considered. So the streams and the wetlands and the forest blocks, um, all the elements that went into the scoring of those properties are, um, addressed in the regulations. The regulations are just, um, blind property lines.
Yes, and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Paul, before we leave this page, number five, I think that might need to refer to the B2 zone. They, you know, just the, the undeveloped piece of the 0.2% zone, just, just to make sure that that's consistent everywhere.
Yeah, I think at some point the two numbers flipped in the drafting, so thank you.
Yeah.
So maybe just to summarize where we're at on this little part, then I think what we're going to do is, is look at the mapping for one and two before we make an ultimate decision on what we want the numbers to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, and then we can maybe read that article that, um, we, and the feedback we heard as well. And I don't, I don't know, Paul, if, um, this is an area where maybe Taylor from the R V, RPC might have some, um, additional kind of feedback on these numbers too. I know if he had kind of offered some expertise.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to give him a copy this draft tomorrow and I'll pose that question with it, certainly.
Great, thank you. Okay, so moving down. So these, these couple of comments seem mostly about just definitions, um, just to make sure adverse was defined.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Well, I did. I did cross out, um, and to minimize, um, I just said, designed to avoid adverse impacts. Um, to major and minor streams associate and associated buffers. Um, without knowing what an adverse impact is, uh, why not keep it? My, I'm always more interested in keeping it simple. Just realize that I need to plug this in.
Yeah.
So that's why.
It's like they're saying the same thing twice. So. Yeah, maybe that second part of the sentence doesn't need to be there.
Well, except that the second part refers to intermittence, whereas the first part refers to major and minor streams.
Um.
Yeah.
So the way I read it, it's saying that don't, I'll, I'll define avoid as don't just for the purpose of this, even though it's maybe not that. But, you know, it, it basically places, um, a higher level of stringency on major and minor than it does on intermittence. As, um, without it being crossed off. So the question is whether we want to do that or not.
Yeah, I, I think my intent was to, um, avoid adverse impacts on major, on all streams. Um, and I left. I failed to add it in there. So I would have, I probably would have said major, minor and intermittent streams and the associated buffers. I mean, why would we want to allow adverse impacts even on an intermittent stream? Intermittent.
I guess that depends on what you consider an adverse impact. I mean, an intermittent stream, you know, may be something that, you know, you, you can direct with a, uh, a drainage swale and a culvert, whereas you may not be able to do that with a bigger stream. So I guess, you know, whether you would consider, um, you know, rerouting something that's intermittent, um, you know, away from development.
Yeah, well, I mean, an intermittent stream that goes through, uh, through a field is, is intermittently not, intermittently becomes a minor or a major if there's a big weather event. So.
Jessica, can I suggest that maybe for this question, if you're willing to have Taylor give you a, a, a recommendation, a thought on it? Um, only because.
That'd be great.
A lot of, not to say that they're not all important, but there's some smaller and bigger ones, and this is one of the smaller ones.
Yeah, I think that seems reasonable and, and the way it's rewritten might just make sense. Cause we do have a buffer. We're saying not to impact them. So.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that. But if you, Paul, ask Taylor that if he has a question, he's unavailable to answer him and to, to explain what it is I've put in here if he's not sure.
Okay.
Did you get that, Paul?
Yes.
I didn't hear.
Yes, he's writing the note right now.
Okay.
Okay, so the next was about snow storage in the stream buffer. Um, and we had had some, originally the draft had some potential reasons why snow storage could be done in the buffer. Um, you know, Michael's feeling like they can find some other spots for snow storage.
Yeah, well, um, my, my sort of personal experience is where I live, we've got some big fields which could be used for snow storage. But we haven't, we haven't taken away.
Yeah, you know, I actually agree with your changes here, Michael. And the reason I say that is because within the stream buffer, they're not allowed to mow or like cut down vegetation. So their snow storage would eventually disappear as trees grew up into that area. So it's not a reliable long-term location. Um, so I guess I, I would agree with your crossouts and I don't know if other people have a feeling for that too.
I, I agree and I don't know what toxins are in whatever they're pushing off, you know, well, so I, I agree with this.
Yeah, I agree too. Um, I know in some cities, they actually store the snow, you know, on lager rivers right on, on the ice. And I think they've largely done away with that for exactly the reason you said, Monica. And that's because there's a lot of, um, not so great stuff in the snow. So, and we don't really have any big streams where, you know, even anybody is even considering doing that now. So for what we have in South Burlington, I definitely agree. I see no reason to put snow within a buffer.
Okay.
An interesting, an interesting case in point is that the city of Montreal used to dump its snow in the St. Lawrence River. And, uh, in about, I don't know, maybe 10 years ago, they said, no, uh, you do what Bernie says. You store it somewhere else and let it, let it, uh, melt when the spring comes.
Onward. Awesome. Done. Next.
Okay, so this is still within the buffer location. I mean, I guess I'm, I don't know if we need to have this clearing of vegetation, like maybe we does anyone see a reason why we need to continue to have that?
You mean that it's prohibited?
Yeah, like, does anyone want to keep the language that's crossed out? I guess is my question. Or Paul, do you see a reason why we would really want to keep that there?
This would be the, um, anything that's removed would still be available to the public for the, um, hearing, right? So I would think that if we felt that we could remove it, but there was a reason someone brought forth in the public hearing, then we could revisit it.
Unless it's new, if it's totally new and it was never in the regulation and we just added it, say in May, then it would just be gone because it was only ever drafted. But if this was in our original, like if it's in our current LDRs and we're removing it, then you're right. It would show up as a red line crossout. Just to be clear about that.
And again, I.
I think it's probably.
Protecting the buffer.
I think it's probably okay, Jessica. I was trying to think of, of exceptions to that. And I think that the only exceptions that I could think of that would be really critical would be like a public infrastructure project that has to cross the stream, but that would fall under infrastructure encroachment. Um, you know, I think that this was probably intended to be a catchall for that sort of occasional issue. But, um, I'll happily run it up the flagpole, but there's nothing that's popping up immediately to me.
Okay, it looks like we have, um, a public comment specifically about this path piece. So, um, Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, um, I have no problem with paths. But it's kind of interesting where I'm wondering if allowance could be made for, rather than, in other words, just say if agriculture is a public good, that's allowed to do whatever it wants, then public recreation could certainly be argued the same way. And I'm not saying we have a basketball court within the buffer. But if we're willing to allow a public recreation path, which may be paved or gravel, then the edge of a soccer field or the edge of just recreational land to throw a frisbee or walk your dog or have a picnic actually arguably has less impact than a recreation path. So if you carve out for a path, you need to carve out just for public recreation in general, except in pervious surfaces or I don't, but. It's hard to come to an end, but you could have, you could have a parcel that's partially city owned or common land. And maybe a corner of it needs to go into the buffer, but it wouldn't be allowed, but somebody could put in a path. So that's all.
Yeah, it's a good point. I think, I think you could probably have like a, well, it's a good point. Does anybody else have a thought on this path piece?
Yeah, um, I, I kind of agree in that if you think about, um, the path that was put in between Technology Park and, um, I forget the name of the road there where, where UVM has all their offices, but you know, it crosses a wetland.
Tilly Drive?
Yeah, you know, there were, there were some, yeah, Tilly Drive. You know, there, there's a bridge there, but you know, that path, you know, on either side of the bridge, you know, was paved. And there was probably some filling and I would guess that that filling probably occurred in the buffer of the wetland. Um, so, you know, I could see where you might do some clearing in a, in a buffer to build a path. And, you know, then I, I asked, well, you know, what like about a road into a subdivision that's going to cross a stream, you know, you would have to do some clearing, um, in order to be able to, you know, just construct it and put in a culvert and all that kind of stuff. So, um,
Um, yeah, Ted, did you?
No, sorry, no.
Um, Paul?
So just quick, two quick notes on that. Um, Bernie, for when you're speaking about crossings, I think that that might fall under G restricted infrastructure encroachment. We tried to consolidate things that are crossing, um, uh, and a, a resource. So I think that that is where that would be covered. Um, the one comment I would have on E that, that Dan spoke to is, um, I, I'm not sure about this idea of, um, requiring it to be 25 feet outside of the buffer. Because I think what you may result in there is if the parking lot can be to the edge of the buffer, but the rec path can only be 25 feet away from it, it's sort of discouraging a rec path ever being part of a design. So if you wanted to be consistent across the board, you could say public recreation paths, period, within the stream buffer. But to add an additional 25 feet to it, sort of makes them even lower priority than a parking lot or a building or a whatever else could be put in there.
Why would you want to put anything, any encroachment in a stream buffer?
No, what I'm saying is the way you've drafted. What I'm saying is that what is drafted here says 25 feet outside of the buffer.
Yep. That means the buffer is protected.
So I think Paul's point is if we aren't going to allow it in the buffer, it should just get removed from the list and just be treated like anything else. It's just not allowed in the buffer.
I'm okay with that.
So if somebody thinks a path should be allowed in the buffer, then speak up. Cause otherwise, um, I think it would be removed from this list and not allowed in the buffer.
One other thing that I would suggest is elsewhere in this section under forest blocks, we did say that unpaved trails are not subject to the rules. And so if somebody was just doing, you know, a, a, a trail that was not a paved path, that that's, that would be okay. I, I would recommend that you still allow an unpaved trail through here because I think people's access to water features are, is an important aspect of people being able to convene with nature in some way.
Right, Duncan?
But. Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about the bike path. I mean, the bike path, you know, goes over, I don't know if it's, you know, by the UVM Wheelock Farm, just down from you, Monica. What is it? If you go down towards, um, the park there, it crosses a river.
Towards Farrell, it is a river.
A stream buffer there with the rec path. Um, so I. So I, I guess I, I'm not sure why we would completely throw that out.
Well, that has a bridge going across it. I mean, that's not touching the water. If anything, that's very protective of the, I, I am glad that Paul clarified because I wasn't sure if you were talking about just paved paths or, or dirt paths. And I, I agree with the notion of just removing paved paths, period. But allowing unpaved paths.
Yeah, I agree with that. And then also just to Duncan's point, this G would allow the, the crossing of such, like a thing such as a path, but with these provisions that it's done in a, a good way.
The, I think the trail that Duncan is referring to, yes, as Monica points out, is that there's a bridge across the stream there. And the, other than the crossing, that, that bike path or walking path doesn't go anywhere near it, you know, in, in the stream, in the stream buffer, if you like. But, you know, that's, that park, that property has got some other weird things about it because there are trails which do cross the stream further downstream without a bridge. So I, I'm happy, I would be happy with as long as it's public, public unpaved trail. Or you leave it out altogether.
Well, it sounded like Paul thought that the unpaved trail was just generally allowed by writing somewhere else.
Well, I was saying that that was our recommendation under the forest blocks. And, and would recommend that there be some parallel to it, but that's up to you guys.
Well, I agree with the unpaved and it sounds like we've heard that from a couple commissioners. So maybe that piece where it says public recreation paths, it should really say an unpaved, public recreation path would be allowed in the buffer.
I would be fine. I'm all for public recreation, so.
I'm okay with it.
I think but.
Public and unpaved is okay.
I'm fine with that.
And then if we get down to the language about the crossings, there were a few suggestions.
So just a reminder that there are some general standards that apply to all restricted infrastructure encroachment, and I can jump down to that if you want. And these are specific additional criteria that apply specific to, to stream buffers.
I, I liked the way that it was written, like without the comments from Michael. And I guess the reason I say that is because I've designed like quite a few stream crossings and they can be done in a way that really matches the stream like geomorphology and habitat needs by staying far enough away and really crossing the whole thing, you know, which is what this language was getting at. Because I do think there are times when a crossing might make sense and if it's done right, it could be done.
Yeah, I'll just add that a lot of times the state gets involved with crossings too. The stream operation engineer with the state often gets involved with what's going on and, you know, there's new standards for culverts that have to have fish passage and wildlife passage and things like that. So there's, you know, pretty comprehensive review and guidance on how to do that nowadays.
So Jessica, are you proposing that it should read the facility must be located at least 25 feet from the edge of the channel of the surface water for all water bodies listed in 1201B1 and 2? And then, and, and 10 feet or leave the 10 feet that I've, that I've struck through, struck as, leave that out?
And 10 feet from the smaller streams that, you know, which it goes on to talk about. And that's what all those number references are.
I agree with Jessica's point on that.
Because in order to get to this criteria, there's actually some pretty strict criteria on when a crossing would even be allowed in the first place. And then this is just giving kind of additional guidance to really make sure that that structure is not constricting the stream.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Move on.
Again, on H and I, I guess I would suggest that if the commission wants to prohibit these in the buffer, that, that H and I should just be deleted because to put the additional requirement of 25 feet beyond the buffer, again, makes it so that it's more difficult to put recreation than it is to put a parking lot.
Okay.
I think that previously H and I were intended to be a little bit of an allowance for an incursion. If you don't want to allow an incursion, I would just recommend that you delete it.
I'd go along with that. Since I'm throughout, I've been trying to create, I mean, protect the integrity of these buffers.
Paul, can I ask you a question? Can you see a situation where that would be an issue on either of those? Just by taking them out or what?
Um, no other than, you know, I, well, one, I, I don't think so that outdoor recreation and research and education are very broad categories. So I guess that there could be something that would be, you know, if there was going to be a zip line, then, you know, that might be challenging or, you know, if the, if the research and education activities was going to be about the, the, the stream. But I think in that case, there'd probably be, be a superseding from the state law that limits the authority to regulate educational uses. So probably okay, but you might get something unusual like the UVM ropes course that can't be where it intended to be previously.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we actually did hear some public comments specifically saying that outdoor recreation should be allowed in the buffer, you know, and I think as it's written, as long as it's not the parking and driveways.
Right, but this would allow for a soccer field. You know, so, so I guess if you mean, you know, complimentary to the operations of a stream buffer, then that's what you should write. I, I think that if somebody were to say, oh, I want to put a baseball diamond in the corner of it in there, that, that's outdoor recreation.
I don't know.
I would prefer that we just take these two out. I mean, we're, we're about protecting the buffers, not about trying to figure out how we can not protect them. So it would be, it would be simpler just to remove H and I as Paul suggests, rather than try to, to finagle a way to make use of them. I think they should remain as, as buffers, these natural buffers. That's the whole name of the game we're trying to play here.
Okay, Duncan?
Protect them.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just, I'm thinking if somebody wants to hike along the edge of a stream or there's, you know, I, I guess it, it comes down to how we define outdoor recreation. I agree with Paul. I don't think a soccer or baseball field is the right thing, but I don't know, I guess I, if somebody wants to kayak or maybe fish or just walk along the edge of the stream, I don't know. Are we?
That was my suggestion Duncan before to, to exempt non-motorized unpaved trails of up to eight feet in width. That might cover that kind of thing for walking or, you know, possibly even like a, I don't know what else, a disc golf course.
Or like a canoe put in, maybe, or a swimming hole. I guess one thing I was thinking is like, what about like picnic, like some picnic tables, like in the shade of the trees? Like, would that be okay? You know, if it's still forested. I, I don't know. I'm just thinking.
Within the stream buffers, you really need to leave it fully vegetated. I think that would be difficult to, as drafted to, unless you, you carve that out, because you'd have to let all the understory grow up and then your picnic tables would be in the, up to your knees and shrubs.
You know, sorry, it, it, we, we're not in any way blocking people from walking in and, you know, creating their own paths. I mean, people will naturally create their own walking paths when they walk the same way every day for two years. That, that is, we're not talking about blocking any of that. We're just talking about the structures and the paving and the, and I think that to Michael's point, we shouldn't be doing any of that. And if somebody opts to come in and lay a picnic blanket down and walk through it, that, they're going to do that, but there shouldn't be a structure. There shouldn't be a garbage can. There shouldn't be a, anything paved in, in that buffer.
Okay, that sounds like support from Michael's suggestion to remove H and I.
Uh, just to be clear, if, if somebody were just sort of creating a walking path through that, that would be fine. But the clearing of vegetation would not, is not allowed. So it's not just about structures.
So here's a question, Paul, and, and it relates to like, like East Woods where people have, you know, beat a path down by the stream and it's, it's pretty natural. But, you know, like if a tree falls, you know, a rotten tree falls, a lot of times, you know, somebody will go in and, and, you know, just clear that as maintenance. So if it was something that was, you know, natural, that was not constructed, but periodic maintenance was required to have it remain usable, would that be allowed?
Yeah, that's fine. That would be clearing of trees that are dead, damaged, diseased, et cetera, invasive species. All that can be removed without, that, that's perfectly fine.
And there, there's some of that discussed in 1205E. So, which hopefully we'll get to.
I mean, if it's, if it's private property, if this buffer is, is on private land, then you'd have to give the landowner's permission to have a picnic or walk on it. If it's public, Monica's point is as well taken. That happens all over the world. If there's an open space and a nice view and birds to watch, people are going to walk through it. But constructing things in a, in a natural, in a nature buffer, we should avoid. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy if these two things are, H and I are removed because it won't impact my, my, my ability to appreciate the natural environment.
Was there anything in this water course an alteration, Paul?
No.
Okay. Let's scroll down till we get.
I think you're down to wetlands now. Excuse me. So you've left the subject of streams now. So this is now on the subject of wetlands.
We've, we've, we've received a lot of guidance, all of us from Vermont Fish and Wildlife and, and others that bigger is better in every case where you have a wetland, partly because some of them have been restricted over time and they need, need to recover. So there's restoration that needs to happen sometimes and it can happen naturally if, if the buffer is big enough.
So with respect to wetlands, I guess this is a question for Jessica. Are the 100 feet and 50 feet per current state regs and we're proposing something more stringent?
Yeah, Michael's proposal is, is more stringent than any state or federal regulation. But our, our underlying draft and our current regulations are already more stringent than the state and federal regulations because we have the class three wetlands and a buffer included here, which is, is not common. So that was already kind of beyond the regular.
But our, our class one and class two are consistent with current regulations.
Yeah.
As it was written and Michael's makes it more stringent than the state.
Yes.
Bernie, I think when you say current, well, you need to, we need to know how old they are and.
No, I'm just asking.
But yes.
You're right, Michael. What current, when was it written? But current is what everybody's following when they get a permit right now.
Except us. Yeah, no, I, I, you know, the, the people that you, you've all heard from, whether it be from Vermont Fish and Wildlife or, or other state institutions, all say, if you can, if you can make it wider, do so because the, the environment has changed and is, is much more under threat.
So do you know, Jessica, is the state considering any changes to their current regs with respect to buffer?
I do not believe so. And I haven't necessarily heard Fish and Wildlife say that specifically about wetlands. I don't know what Michael's referencing.
Well, because if, if there was going to be a change and we were going to be on top of it, then it would certainly make sense to do it. But, you know, if, you know, there's no changes proposed and we meet the current state standards, which people are required to meet to get other permits, then I guess I would be a little more hesitant to change it. But, but my opinion.
Okay. Can I ask a quick?
Yeah.
That you said the 100 and the 50 feet, that's the current state standard or that, that exceeds the current state standard?
It is the current state standard, but what exceeds the state standard is the class three wetlands.
They're not, they're not handled at all at the state level.
That's correct, Duncan.
Um, Ted?
In the piece that I was referring to that some haven't had time to look at, it's interesting, they break it down on with wetlands. If you want improved water quality, they're looking at about, it said 120 meters, which is what, 300 feet or so? If you want in moderate stream, moderate stream temperature, it'd be around 120 feet and provide water would be for 120 feet. So it's interesting. They, they have some pretty, pretty big figures there in this report. So. Well, bigger maybe better.
One of the other points.
Well, let's hear from Paul first, you Bernie.
Um, I, you know, I, I guess the, the thing that I'd like to just sort of flag here is the class threes. Class three wetlands by their definition have a, a significantly lower value and function. That's, that's what makes them a class three. They're typically, and maybe by definition, but I'm not 100% sure that disconnected from other wetlands. So they tend to be little sort of ditches and things. And I guess I'd just like to flag for you that as you think about how, how you want all the regulations to come together, requiring a significant buffer around all class three wetlands will really sort of push up against the other design standards that you're looking at. They tend to just sort of appear in little bits and pieces all over properties. And so that's why our recommendation was to actually get, get rid of the rule that the applicability, if they're less than 300 square feet in size, that would be new. And to have a lesser buffer. The commission did talk a couple of years ago about eliminating regulation of class threes altogether. I'm not necessarily saying that's where you want to go, but the, the, this will sort of butt up against the other design standards pretty quickly throughout our city.
I agree with keeping, uh, class three as Paul was explaining it.
Okay.
And my thought would be to keep all of this as it's currently written, um, is I guess where I'm at.
Bear in mind that according to.
Hold on, Michael, let's see if anyone else has any comment on this. I mean, we've seen years and heard anybody else thoughts.
You've seen mine, but I need to defend it.
You've, you have actually defended it already tonight as well. So, but there's many people we didn't hear anything from. So.
Okay, I'll wait.
Duncan, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, no, I, I would, I would agree with keeping it as it's written. Um, and again, I think per what Monica said earlier, you know, the public will see this and we'll get some feedback on it. Um, if we're way off, I think we'll, we'll find that out. Um, but I, I would agree to keep it as it was written. Can you clarify that Duncan? Do you mean as it was written, as we see it right now, or as it was previously drafted? As you had first drafted it, I'm sorry.
As it's written prior to Michael's changes.
That's, that's what I meant, yes.
Yeah.
Any, anyone else? So, Michael, did you want to say something else here?
Yes, I, I read a report from the Nature Conservancy. I think I've mentioned it to you all before that Vermont has lost nearly half of its wetlands. And they say that we should ensure there's no further loss, net loss of wetlands through inadequate natural resource protection standards. And they say while striving to realize net gains in, in wetlands. So, um, if you, if you widen the buffer, uh, you, 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 you make that wetland more resilient over time. And they recommend, you know, let's, uh, add, add protection. They, they say the protection we've had so far is inadequate.
Do they specifically say make the buffers wider, I guess as a, as a piece of that? Or to protect, because for many, many, many years, we didn't really have any protection. It sounds like they're maybe saying we need to protect.
Um, I, I think what they're saying is don't encroach, uh, and keep what you've got.
Okay. Um, Paul Ingles, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I support the spirit of what Michael's trying to do in general to be leaders in conservation and protection of natural resources. Um, I, uh, I guess that's going to be my point of all of this, you know, to err as much as we can on the side of protection and conservation.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't, if we were going to leave class three as Paul had written it, and to, what Duncan said before too, I, I wouldn't mind, um, moving to the 200 and the 100 per Michael's comments for number, for bullet number one. And again, seeing what kind of feedback we get because we don't know what impact that will have on specific properties. And so, you know, we could either start it at the lower or start it at the higher. And for bullet one, I wouldn't mind starting it at the higher and seeing what kind of public feedback or concern we get from that. Because if there isn't concern, then there's that much more protection. And if there is concern, we can address it at that point, knowing that this is, um, above and beyond.
And my only concern with the, with changing the numbers is, is being consistent with current state regs. And, and I know people, you know, that oftentimes, entities are required to get permits at the state level. And so, um, you know, for that reason, primarily I would want to be consistent with the state regs. And like I said, if the state was looking at changing and we were going to be ahead of it, that would be fine. But if, if the state is comfortable with these numbers and that's what's required to get a state permit, then I would want to stick with, with these.
That makes sense.
Looks like Duncan's nodding and kind of goes along with what he said before, um.
Give a vote.
Maybe we should have the state change them.
Yeah, Ted, maybe that makes sense to.
I'm not sure why we're so hidebound by, uh, by this. Are you, yeah. What, what is, what is the concern about stretching out a little bit? And going for more than we absolutely have to as, as defined by state?
Well, I think one concern, I mean, we've seen some things in the chat tonight as well as, um, you know, from city council. What does this look like? In the bigger picture of balancing development and protection? So I, I don't know. We can vote like Ted just said, or we could, um, kind of go with Monica's hybrid approach, which was keep number two as previously written, um, and pu- put out the wider buffer, um, for public comment for number one. Seems like it might make sense.
The other way around. It was the other way around because item two is class three was not regulated, except in South Burlington.
Right. So what I think Monica's point was, was that number two, the class three wetland areas should have, that are exceeding 300 feet, should have the 50 foot buffer, not the 100 foot buffer that you were suggesting.
Okay. And leave item one, leave item one as is.
As you suggested with the wider buffer, you know, for public comment. Um, this has been, um, a bigger conversation. Did any of the public have items specific to these wetland buffers? Um, Dan, did you?
Yeah, a quick comment. I mean, this is kind of like the river corridors, which you already did, which I helped you guys with. And then the, your consideration of the 500 year floodplain, like, kind of got to look at the maps and see what, what seems to impact things. And with the 500 year floodplain, you're kind of doing the B1 and the B2, which is kind of creative. So you can't really address the impacts. These wetland regs, I think have probably been in place a long time, Paul. People are used to a certain setback and understanding of it. And if it changes, then I'd be like, oh, what about plans I had for that 50 foot or 20 foot or whatever it is. So clear detailed maps would be useful for people to weigh in. Thanks.
Yeah. And I actually agree with that. I think we would want to see the wider buffer mapped, um, in the mapper if. Um, Roseanne, you popped up. Did you have something?
Yes, I do. Just a brief one on this. And that is, um, keeping it the way it was because people are used to that. Um, it is, is sort of foolhardy because we have been destroying things because we haven't been protecting nature as much as we should have. You know, science is learning more and more how valuable riparian areas are. And so the more we can protect them, uh, and everyone is important, even though it's class three, it's still important. So please keep that in mind. We're talking about preserving, protecting, conserving the environment. So, um, err on the side of, of being more protective, it certainly won't hurt. Um, it's just going to save more nature, which will then end up saving us. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Roseanne. So it sounds like we're interested in seeing the class one and class two mapped with the bigger buffer and, you know, keeping that revised language from Michael in there to see if we get additional public comment on that, mapping it wider. Okay. Anything else on this?
Uh, I would just note that, um, so it sounds like that was the majority, but not, not necessarily uniform that that was what we wanted to see. Um, we're happy to map it, but I do have to say that wetlands mapping on a citywide basis is not perfect. You know, it's really something that you can only really know the extent of, of wetlands. Once you've feel verify them, that's not like the streams. So we can show the best that we have, but it's not going to show the entirety of the city.
Great.
Yeah, I'm all for mapping it, but you can put me in the, in the nay column and I'd like it to remain the way it is. So, but minority opinion, I'm sure.
Well, it seems like this is kind of a split issue. So. Okay, let's, uh, see what's next here.
I'm sorry, can I make, ask a question for both this one and the, the river? Is there, is it possible to contact the landowners, uh, whose land would specifically be impacted by that to make sure they are aware and go to the public hearing? Some kind of?
Resources are really widely spread across the city.
All right. Just a thought, just because I'm, I'm curious, I'm very curious about the public comment on that.
So this section here is the standards for wetland protection themselves. Currently, the city, the, the DRB, is, has the guidance in the regulations to, um, you know, look at class one and class two wetlands and their buffers uh, a little bit more stringently than class three wetlands and their buffers, as you can see here with the minimizing encroachment. In order to, you know, give them some guidance about what to prioritize.
Well, we've already up above eliminated what I had added for class three. So we should be consistent and take it out from here. But the last two sentences which have been struck through, I would, I, I'd like those to remain that way. In D1.
So, um, can I, would it be an accurate representation, Michael, to summarize to say that your proposal would, would state that, um, impacts to encroachment into class into buffer, wetlands and their buffers is prohibited, rather than to allow somebody to get currently that the state wetlands permit and go through an evaluation of their functions and values and then make the determination. Is that an accurate summary?
That would, that would be my preference, yes.
For the class one and two?
Yeah.
And their buffers?
And their buffers.
Uh, actually, I'm not, yes, I believe I asked Michael for a clarification on that and that's what he meant to say.
Whether it's generally agree with that approach?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, so a wetlands general permit from the Vermont Department of Environment Conservation, what does that involve? What, what would the land or what are they doing when they get that? I'm just wondering what.
It's, it's actually significantly involved. Like I was just on the phone with one of the wetland scientists today for a project and I mean, I, I know Michael's really trying to make sure that they're not encroaching here, but the wetland scientists are really quite strict in the state and, and generally, um, you know, has a lot to do with the, the actual function of the wetlands themselves and how good they are. So, so in a case where there's already been encroachment, they're not very well connected and maybe they have a lot of invasives in them. It's maybe not as big of a deal to, to have some encroachment, um, you know, versus a high, like a really high quality functioning one. So I mean, they do do quite a bit of analysis and, and it's not a permit that's just given out to any old wetland, um, encroach. It's, it's a pretty detailed, intensive study. And there's a big piece of it about, um, looking at other ways to avoid any impacts. There's a big avoidance piece.
There's also a mitigation piece too.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a pretty thorough vetting of what somebody is looking to do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what, um, South Village had to go? Go through, um, Dorset Farms, the, whatever the road's called now between Dorset Farms and South Village? That, that sort of threw wetlands. Did they have to go through the permit process?
Uh, it predates me Ted, but I would guess that yes, there was, in all likelihood, there were at least some buffer impacts. This state, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica, but tends to, they, there's a high bar for all of it, but the bar is higher for the wetland itself than for the buffers. And so there are times when, um, impacts to buffers have been authorized. Um, one, one example that I think is sort of an extreme example is that portions of what is now being built out as city center, were class two wetlands. Now that's a, that's a sort of whole other level of it. And that's been approved at this point. But um, there are other areas where applicants apply to put parking lots and things like that.
Have there been cases in South Burlington where they've been denied? Where the developer's been denied? Probably a tough question, but.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's, I could ask our staff, I think it's a little bit hard to prove a negative because typically in order to get an approval at the local level, you have to show your state permit. And so if they didn't get their state permit, they maybe never applied to us.
Yeah.
So once again, I'll just advocate for leaving it as originally written and, and going with the state permit requirements. There's a minority opinion.
Jessica, what was your opinion on that? Cause this is right in your line of.
Yeah, I guess my opinion was the same as what Bernie just said. I do, it's a really rigorous review. And it's not just a given that something would be allowed. Um, I guess that was my feeling, that it was written really pretty well, but I would, I could, I could go either way, I guess.
Jessica, you, you mentioned that, uh, you know, they might have a different view of a wetland if it's already been encroached upon and, uh, um, and maybe be more, um, be, be less restricted because of that. But it seems to me that we should go the other way because if it's already been encroached upon, it needs to recover, uh, and, and be restored, if you like, which can, can be a natural process. But if we continue to encroach, well.
I guess, I guess it's actually, it's a good point you're making, Michael, but it's actually, they do take into consideration both pieces. They actually consider how much of the wetland has already been removed and is no longer there to contribute. So that is like the cumulative piece of it is part of it. So like, say there was a five acre wetland that already had a half acre taken away from it historically, like they might not want to allow any more encroachment into that because it's already lost that much value in area.
Yeah. I just don't know why, why we should be so hidebound by, if it's, if that's the way the state has it, that's the way we should go. I don't agree with you, Bernie. I think we should try and, uh, lead, not follow. I mean, South Burlington can, can set the standard for a lot of places if we are, if we are courageous about it. Um, and then, yeah. So I don't know why we should, why we should hang on, on what's written in, in state regulations, which as you already acknowledged are old.
But very stringent. And so, um, I guess we can agree to disagree.
Uh, Ted?
Yeah, you said you.
What about the? What about the part that says consistent with the purpose of this section?
Here, Michael, let's hear from Ted.
Sorry, Jessica, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but when you said, you know, um, you could go either way on this. Have you seen cases where the state did allow a particular development in your, in your professional opinion, it probably shouldn't have?
No, I guess, and that's why I was thinking that, like, I, most of my work is restoration based. So I'm not always, you know, I don't really work on development projects that encroach on wetlands. Um, but, you know, it's just not part of my work, but, um, I just, I guess I just feel like the wetland scientists are so committed to their work that they're being really stringent about what kind of review and criteria and. stringent about what kind of review and criteria and, you know, everything that goes into their approval that. I just feel like they're doing a good job, I guess, is what I'm. We did such a bad job for so long that, you know, now that there are these regulations, they seem like they're pretty good, I guess.
Sorry.
A little suspicious, but, you know, I respect your, your professional opinion, so that goes a long way.
Well, and I just think that we're, we're adding so many protections in this article that wherever we can keep things streamlined for landowners, you know, as, as long as we know the protection is there, i- if we can keep things streamlined where we feel the state is, is competently, you know, doing a good job and then fill in the areas that we need to just within, because we are adding a lot into this article, so.
Right. I guess, I guess Monica, that is where, I guess, my, my feeling is. Like, I really want to expand for the habitat blocks and the connectors and the flood plains and all these new things. But it does seem to me like the wetlands is one thing the state is really doing a good job with. And, and to make a change that's like outside that, it just feels like it could be really complicated for developers. This, I mean, some of the other things, I think we can really push the boundary, but this feels like it's so. I, I don't know, like, things have come around and it, it kind of lines up with what Michael actually read, which was basically, we did such a bad job for so long, we need to have these protections. But I actually think these protections are actually in place at this point. Wetlands is one of the first things that people came around on.
Well, I, I can give you an example of regulations that are out of date. My association wanted to remove a tennis court, because not enough people were using it. So I was asked to check with, with watershed management at, at the, the office in Essex, whether we would require, would be required to restore it. And they sent somebody out here to inspect it and said, well, that you would never have got a permit to build that, that tennis court here now, but back then you were. So, you know, it shows that maybe the regulations that we're following today are not stringent enough and will change with time when people realize how important it is to be environmentally responsible and stringent.
Duncan, go ahead.
Yeah, Monica brings up a great point. I mean, we, we are definitely adding a lot of stuff with this article as well in terms of regulations and rules and stuff. And I think in a situation like this, where we have a situation where the state is obviously, you know, and I, I trust what you're saying, is doing a very good job regulating this. I, I think I would be giving it as it is, knowing that we have a very stringent guideline set down by the state, and that it sounds like this permit is that, is a very stringent guideline.
Yeah. And I guess to be clear, the state's doing a good job with class one and class two, and we're actually adding to that to add protections to class three wetlands and class three buffers. So it feels like with what was written there, we're already pushing the boundary, because we're adding a whole additional resource area of the class three.
Jessica, why don't you talk to the wetland scientists that you know and ask them about this?
About making the buffers wider?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. It's a good suggestion, Paul, I'll do that.
Because I mean, I think we're well-intentioned, but not scientifically informed, maybe, you know.
And, and actually, wetland classifications do change over time. I'm aware of class three wetlands that have been subsequently inspected by, by A and R or DEC. And so no, this is no longer class three, this is class two. So it does change.
I'm sure Kennedy Drive never would have been built.
Yeah.
Which one?
Kennedy Drive.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Are we ready to move on from this area?
So am I gathering here that the majority is looking to keep this language as previously drafted for the, for the allowances here?
Yeah, and I'm going to follow up with the wetland scientist about potential, the wider buffer piece that we've already kind of talking about.
Can I ask one last question? What about roadways? Paved surfaces shall be no wider than 20 feet and, again, arrowhead in both cases shall not cross or bifurcate a wetland or wetland buffer.
May I suggest that maybe that, that, that you address that question together with the larger question of restricted infrastructure encroachment altogether? When you get to that section, because I think it's sort of, it, it, it's that subject on all the resources together and, and might be a single conversation.
Well, if it's, well, then why is it, yeah?
Well, this would be an additional standard beyond any allowances. So the way that the restricted infrastructure encroachment is written is that it's a, it's a set of standards about one you can encroach, and then there's supplemental standards for each individual resource. But it's up to you guys entirely.
So these are the basic standards, and the supplemental standards come later?
These are the supplemental. Well, specific to a, a infrastructure encroachment.
Yep. Well, does anybody here that, that shouldn't, that should not stay the way I've, I've stated it? On number 5A?
Well, I think Paul was suggesting that, you know, we actually need to address the bigger question of the, the, the reasons why that might even happen when we get to that last question.
In the interest of time, I'll, let's move ahead.
Okay. Sorry, let me just write my note so I don't forget it. Okay.
I, I had a question on article, I mean, A, the purpose where it says mapped and delineated, and I'm not, I haven't been able to figure out what, which map that is. Or it will be mapped and delineated on the next page.
We can verify that, Michael, so that, that would be the published map that the state maintains of sightings of rare, threatened and endangered species.
Okay. And then under C, I'm just suggesting stick with the state. As we've consistently said, let's go with what the state says, so, under C1.
That seems fine.
Have the blocks and connectors. I had a question on B, 1205B, if we're moving there. And this is probably something, I know it's something we, we discussed many, many months ago, and I don't think I understood the, the implications of what, of what, of what might occur. So we've, we've said that, except land located within 50 feet horizontal distance of a principal building existing as of the day that these regulations that's fine, if it's not a very environmentally important or sensitive piece of land, but what if it is? You wouldn't want to include it.
I think it was just the idea that, you know, someone could clear a tree that might fall on their house or like maintain an area directly around their building that's already in existence, so.
Yeah, but it says exclude the land that is located within 50 feet of that building. That means it could be the next parcel. And that parcel might be 50 acres of woods, for all I know. I, I think that that's a problem.
I- in regard to one acre parcels, we, didn't we already make the decision to not include?
That's item one, yes.
Yes, okay. So now we're talking about item two, which is really only the area around an existing building. The 50 feet around an existing building.
It doesn't say that. It says 50 feet from.
Located.
So, Michael, what's, what's your question? I'm, I'm not sure that I'm totally understanding the question. What was intended to be written was, any piece of, any area within 50 feet of a building can be maintained and cleared of an existing building. That was what it was intended to be written as, but it sounds like maybe that doesn't. You're interpreting land as being possibly an entire parcel rather than just the 50 feet?
Yeah, we, we have a boundary that is 25 feet from, from my house. And on the other side of that boundary is a is a 25 acre forest. The way I read this.
I think I understand the question, and it sounds like it's a, it's sort of a wording question, not a policy question, that commissioners, including you, Michael, were fine with the idea of allowing clearing within 50 feet of the building, but you're concerned that it might, if it touches another parcel, that that opens up the entire adjacent parcel.
Yeah, it's, it's open to, to misinterpretation or, or a different interpretation. It's, it's a matter of rewording it in such a way that what I fear cannot happen.
I'm fine with just make, verifying that.
Okay, so then number three.
Was the intent that that 50 feet would be within the same parcel ownership?
I think my suggestion, Michael, would be that it be 50 feet, period, because there's a pretty substantial case law around the obligations of an adjacent property owner to maintain their trees if it might be affecting the, the adjacent property. So for example, we had a circumstance a few years ago in the city where we had trees that were overhanging a parking lot and we were required to trim those trees because they were having a negative effect on the adjacent property, even though the trees were on our property. So I would suggest that it remain be 50 feet, period, regardless of property ownership.
So how are you going to alleviate my fear?
By talking with smarter people than me.
Okay, good.
Wait, Paul, that, that, sorry, bells and whistles here. I thought that it was the, the property owners, like if a tree is like overlapping onto another, you know, the trunk is on one parcel, but the branches are on another, that it was the, the right of way of the other landowner to do as they wish and not.
But it, but it could also be the responsibility of the adjacent property owner if they've got a tree that's listing, that's leaning over, that could damage. I don't want to go into the whole legal of it, because it's, I'm not an attorney. I'm just saying that there, there is case law of responsibility for, from adjacent property owners.
So just, just on a side note, I think the chat feature really needs to be like very specific to exactly what we're talking about at the exact moment, because it's, it's distracting if there's like other conversations or pieces of discussion that's not directly applicable to our current items right here. So just as an aside. Okay, so we're onto this number three.
So number three was written just for clarity sake to describe the circumstance where if there's a conservation, let's say there's a property that's 95% covered in forest, the conservation PUD would allow for an impact to up to 30% of the property, and this was trying to flag that. I did write in the staff notes to you that I, I understand how the idea of an impact by something called a conservation PUD can seem somewhat counterintuitive and did want to offer to you a, a, a separate way that you could think about this, which is there are approximately 10 to 12 privately owned parcels that are more than 70% forested. If you chose, you could look at those as you did back in October with general forest blocks and you could say, here's the area where we would be comfortable with an impact and just put that into policy, rather than having this sort of basically map the line the way you want it, rather than having a, this oddity where, where somebody can remove 30, up to 30% of the forest block. So I did want to offer that to you if you wanted to go through that exercise.
That would be like doing what we did before with the habitat block maps and very specifically saying, all right, which 30% would be?
Correct, so there's, right, so there's, as I said, looking at the mapping, there's about a dozen parcels that are, that are more than 70% covered in forest blocks that are privately owned. So it's not, it's, it's not, we're not dealing with, with hundreds here.
But, so if we did that, Paul, like, how would that work with the combination of some of those other resources that aren't mapped? So say there's like a wetland that's not well delineated now, and we've already modified our, our habitat block, but then they're still over their 70% coverage by hazards and level one.
That's a good question.
It does make me wonder if it might be better to leave it up to the, like, the standards.
Yes, that is, that is a good, that's a good counterpoint.
I agree, I think it would just, I mean, we, they have, they will have to make that decision and keep all the resources. I think we have a really good structure in place with these with the, with the conservation PUD, so.
Okay.
Let the landowner make the decision.
Yeah, so now.
I would note that there's only, the good news is there's only a handful of parcels to which this provision would apply anyway.
So what's the commission's pleasure?
Um, well, I think with number three, it should stay the way it was written, because it, it's really just referring down to the specific modifications that we have the standards for here. Right?
You mean, specific parcels?
No, no, these, these things we're looking at right now, like one, lots are. Oh, wait, no, you scrolled back up, now I got confused.
Yeah, one is one acre.
Yeah, so numbers, weren't we on number three here?
Yes.
I don't know, I guess we didn't.
I think, as, as Paul had written, works because it's referring to the conservation PUD. And the conservation PUD explains exactly what they can and can't do. We don't want to explain it here. So that's why, as it was written, works because the DRB would have to refer to the regulations as spelled out in the conservation PUD. So the protection is there. It's just directing them.
Is, is my point about the fact that you, if you add to a habitat block, you, you may be prejudicial to the landowner on whose land you're. on whose land you're adding habitat block? And if you remove it, you're doing something that's antithetical to protection?
But not once you get to the document that it's pointing you to, which is the conservation PUD, which spells it out. It's basically saying, you know, that the DRB has this right or this responsibility when a conservation PUD is explained. And then it gets into all of those details and all those questions are answered there. So I think that we just shift them, direct them to the conservation PUD.
I do think that Michael's point of adding to, that seems like superfluous language because if it's added to the habitat block through DRB, then it would not be exempt from the standard. So that's something we can, we'll verify when we do a more detailed look at this.
Okay.
Okay, so on to the modifications.
So this is the language, well, the language as drafted and then Michael's edits is the, what you had talked about a couple of weeks ago on some, the possible exceptions in that little chart that you asked me to draft up.
Yeah, and when we were talking about it, I had the difficulty with the idea that you can just simply move things around. You can, I guess, move them, but they won't be the same. So that's why I've added a few qualifications.
So I guess on that first one, the big thing is really just saying that the physical land area has to stay the same. You can't reduce it by 3,000 square feet.
Yeah, and it should be contiguous, otherwise it's no longer a connected habitat block.
Yeah, that makes sense. That seemed fine. I mean, we had talked about one to one exchange of areas so that the physical area didn't change, so.
I think my comments are up above in relating to the, is this D that we're in now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that we discussed that depending on what the layout of the block, that it should be permissible to alter it as long as, if you're adding to a section of it because you subtracted to another area, all in the same lot, as long as within a 10-year period, it's offering the protections and, you know, connected to the habitat, that that should be able to be acceptable as long as the whole of the block remains. So are we saying the opposite here, Michael? You disagree with that?
No, I think his comment is actually in line with that there. That piece where he struck out the exceeds 3,000 square feet. It's basically just saying there's no net reduction.
No net reduction, okay.
That's in line with what you had said, Monica.
Okay. Can I see what my other comments were up there that I'm trying to keep? Can you scroll up?
Need to be clear that moved habitat is still connected to within the contiguous habitat and that if trees are cleared, that new trees must be, must connect to forested.
Area directly, yeah.
Well, you know.
If you're taking from a forested area and you want to move it elsewhere, you need to connect again to forested area so that forested area remains same.
Paul Engels?
Yeah.
Were you trying to say something?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, wondering how this applies to the O'Brien development on Kennedy Drive.
Paul, I think that, well, two things. One, the O'Brien development has been submitted, so it wouldn't be applicable.
Right.
But also, I don't believe that there are any mapped forest blocks on that particular parcel. There are some forested areas, but not that rose to the level of the Arrowood reports. So I don't think that that parcel, the one that's under review right now is in there. Possibly the one that was built, you know, four or five years ago might have been, but of course, that's.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, the four or five years ago, the clear cut.
I might, it's up to you guys. I might suggest keeping some ability for the DRB under the minor adjustment for quirky circumstances of 3,000 square feet is too big, maybe 500 square feet. Sometimes it's just really difficult to get back to exactly zero. But that's up to you guys.
Let me look.
That seems like a common sense approach.
It also seems like it'll become a net default, right? I mean, won't everyone just try to remove 500?
That's true.
500 is like, I mean, they may as well just keep it then. Maybe we don't have that at all and then see in public comment, if, public hearing, if that's a concern, including from the DRB.
Some small area, I mean, maybe to like get a well or something. I mean, there could be a reason. Like a very small area. I mean, maybe it's even smaller, maybe 200.
Probably tied to certain allowable exemptions, but then it just seems like if anything happened, then it will always be pursued and then it.
Well, whatever, what I was trying to avoid is any net reduction.
I mean, we can just go with no net reduction and have them match it. I mean, that is what we were talking about at the last meeting. Okay, so if that's one, it seems like there's about your head nodding about no net reduction. So then two.
You know, two, I really would like to know where we're going to put in the definition of core habitat area. It was very specifically, and I actually went back to the Arrowood report and was trying to find it and couldn't. So maybe I'm just hallucinating, but I thought it, I thought the core habitat areas, as we're defining them in South Burlington, met certain criteria. They were X number of acres, they were X many feet away from, you know, human trafficking, human trafficking, oh, good, people. No human trafficking. So I think we need to get a definition and so people are not confused about human trafficking in our LDRs.
So Monica, the way that the Arrowood report reads is that they define a core area as being 100 meters in from the edge of whatever they mapped. So at least 100 meters away from any human activity.
But I think in addition to that, Paul, they removed from their list of priorities habitat blocks that did not have more than X, was it 20 acres? There was something else as well, and we've made the decision to agree with Arrowood and we have not included every habitat block that they have listed. They took some out that did not have a certain number of acreage. So I think it's important to somewhere state that.
Oh, I do agree with Monica. If we're actually just calling out must not include core habitat areas, like we have to write what a core habitat area is somewhere. Or put it on the map, one of those are the options.
I guess my bigger picture question for all of you, and I'm happy to do that, is the distinction between number one and number two is not a, is not a big distinction. Number one is basically ask it and the DRB can just do it without your having really to demonstrate very much. Two does require you to show at least a couple of things. Are you okay with allowing a little bit more? And there's nothing magical about the three acre size there. You can modify that. But to, if they demonstrate that there are, that there are these features, that that's okay to trade.
I'm trying to get back to the letter you got from Andrew Chalik. He says that the Arrowood report concludes that a forest is core if there's no human disturbance within 100 meters of the forest.
And they define. It's 100 meters interior to it.
Yeah, and they define core forest as the area of a habitat block remaining after applying the internal 100 meter to the outside edge of the block, i.e. they call that an interior buffer. Is that the definition you're looking for, Monica?
Well, yeah, but it's that acreage too. But, so, I'm sorry, and number two, though, to me, it's the same thing as long as there isn't a net reduction. Because if you're taking a non-core buffer, whatever, exterior part, and you're shifting it, yes, you're starting to expose some of what was going to be called core habitat. But as long as you're adding that buffer elsewhere on the same habitat block, you're actually creating more core habitat in that other area. You're converting some of the other exterior to become core. So it, they, it still just has to be contiguous. They can take a part of a a non-core habitat portion, but they have to reconnect it, recreate it while connecting to that same habitat block. And then the net effect will be the same.
So which item in in 1205, are you?
Well, number two that we're looking at, the small onsite habitat block exchange. It just, it, once you remove it, once you disconnect it from the habitat block, you have reduced the size of the habitat block and you've exposed some of the core, therefore not making a core anymore. I think they should be able to move it, but it has to stay in contact with the main habitat block.
You can't, in all honesty and practically, you can't move things like habitat blocks. Some of them have got mature trees, some of them have got vernal pools, some of them have got streams, some of them have got little swamps. I mean, you can't just move that stuff and then you can't move what lives there, whether they live above the ground or underground. So I don't know how we can talk about just moving habitat blocks. If you want to create one somewhere else that's equivalent, that is a huge job. But you can't just move habitat blocks. I mean, you know, it's akin to the millions of people who've been relocated because some government wanted to build a big dam and flood their villages.
But again, I was pointing to East Woods, which used to be a train.
Go ahead.
So we did talk about this at the last meeting with the general concept that, you know, in the outer section of these, that outer area, it's not perfectly mapped because it was done with remote sensing. Like, there might be one area that doesn't have very many trees, but another area on the same parcel that actually does have better trees. And that takes into considerate, that's one of these criteria. So, you know, we actually saw some of these spots when we were looking in more detail. So it's the idea that in some of these transition areas, like it might actually be better habitat if they kind of shifted the line over. Duncan?
Yeah, that actually had to do with the question I was going to ask Jessica. So we're assuming that the land that they are going to exchange was land outside of what we had already identified as core habitat or habitat block. Is that correct?
Yeah, it'd be.
And it's got to be on that parcel, so it's, I guess I'm just wondering, is there a lot of that land out there that we didn't already map?
I would say that there are some circumstances, Duncan, that I've seen where there might be a small tree stand somewhere that was separated enough from the habitat block that Arrowood did not map it as being part of the habitat block. And I guess, as staff was putting this together, we were sort of thinking of the circumstance of, you know, an application's in front of the DRB. There's a, you know, half acre mature tree stand that's sort of separate from the habitat block. Meanwhile, there's a sort of transitional forest area that's part of the habitat block. And the rules say that you must protect the transitional areas. And the developer says, okay, well, then I guess I have to cut down the mature trees in order to protect the transitional area. And that sort of seemed like the kind of circumstance where people are going to be scratching their head and saying, well, why don't you protect the more mature trees on the property? Now, I understand they're not part of the habitat block and so that would be the reason to do it. I was, but that was sort of the genesis of this question, of this thought.
On the transition area, it could be invasives too. So, you know, I think the purpose of this was to allow some latitude for what's actually on the site.
Yeah, I agree. I'm noticing that it's pretty late. We had a comment asking how late we thought we might go in the chat. I'm seeing we're only on page less than halfway through. How are we feeling on time and what's left and where we want to be at the end of the meeting?
Is there a convenient breaking point? I think tonight has been really constructive and I'm glad that we did a special meeting to get through it. So if there's a convenient stopping point, you know, either here or soon, then maybe we just cut there.
But also, can I just ask, I know we might only be halfway through on pages, but are we really halfway through on comments? Because I think, are there, how many more big?
Well, you know, there's quite a few comments on the habitat block piece still left. And then there's also quite a few comments on the restricted encroachment piece at the end. So I don't think that we could get through all of that tonight. And I guess, I don't know, Paul, if you want to just scroll down a little bit and see how much more there's on habitat blocks. I think it might be more than we can do tonight, just based on.
Right, so there's a little bit on the exchange and then there's a fair amount on the prioritization associated with if you happen to have a property that's more than 70% covered. And then I think you get into the sort of standards for habitat block protection and what that means. So there is still a fair amount to go. You know, I'll go as long as you all want to go. Your next regularly scheduled meeting is January 12th. If you wanted, I'd certainly be willing to have a special meeting on January 5th to sort of make headway. That would be the Wednesday. You could also do it the Tuesday, but I know that you got some feedback that competing with the DRB is complicated for folks, so. There's certainly a lot in here that's given us the opportunity to get things going with Taylor at the CCRPC.
It would be so awesome to get through this before the holiday. I don't know if that's at all possible. I'm just afraid we're going to lose our.
Yeah, no, I think we already established we can't do another meeting before the holiday because we had done the doodle poll, but we could do the January 5th or 6th.
I'd be fine with January 5th and then do our regular meeting on the 12th. And hopefully by the 12th, we're, you know, pretty far along.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe we can get that additional mapping of the buffers and I can hear back from the wetland scientists before then to have that information. That gives a little bit of time to get that work done.
Let me ask one question that's a broad question for you. Is there anything that anyone saw that you like in addition to what we already talked about mapped between now and then? I don't think there is, but if there was something that I could, that if somebody said, hey, I'd love to see X thing, now would be a great time to mention it without getting into the policy debate.
So Paul, at the very beginning of the meeting, I heard somebody say that Monica had drawn those two lines for. So Paul, at the very beginning of the meeting, I, I heard somebody say that, that, you know, Monica had drawn those two lines for connectors and that you had done some work on mapping that. So that would be good to see. In addition, I think Michael sent some information from Sophie on actual wildlife sightings. It might be good to overlay that and any other wildlife information we have. Along with Monica's market.
Update on, on what Monica had proposed at the last meeting. I did speak with Jens Hillke. I had a great conversation with him. We, I basically walked him through all the, all of the draft as to where you're at. He felt that the two specific ones that you talked about at the last meeting, he didn't see being at the same priority level in terms of what their, their, their functions would be, that in order to justify the regulatory action of restricting development there, that it's, the city is already sort of becoming a leader with the actions and the ones that you've selected and that these ones, absent some very significant investments in restoration, aren't really viable as sort of at the same caliber today. And so he recommended that those not be in the initial round of them at the, at the same level.
And. But he further also talked about instead using that kind of secondary language perhaps in another form, though?
Yeah, I mean, I, he and I talked about, and this might lead into what Ray Gonda was talking about at the beginning of the meeting, that there's nothing that says that there can't be city goals and community work to, to, to restore working with private landowners or the city in the development of our own management plans to encourage these. It's just a different bar from the legal bar of restricting property through zoning. And so he was strongly an advocate of all of the community work that, that Ray and others have been starting to, to look at of how do we restore connections across properties? And that, there's no reason that that couldn't be in your plan, separate from your regulations. And then just one quick note on the, on the habitat sightings, he was excited to see that there, that there was some updates to that. He did note that from a regulatory perspective, to be cautious in the use of them, that they're very good for, in his words, getting people excited about habitat and for thinking about where things might be, but that they, as sort of a, a, a tool in thinking about regulations, the, the flaw in habitat sightings is that sort of by definition, they're where, it's wherever you put the camera up is where you might see them. You, there might be places that don't have cameras that are stronger habitats. So he was urging caution with that. But we can certainly, you know, connect them together and show you to, to what extent they're overlapping.
Jessica, might I just say a word about wildlife sightings? Um, we've had cameras in our backyard now for about three and a half years. And I have hundreds of their, their video clips, they're about 10-second video clips of wildlife that pass through. Bobcats, coyotes, fox, we saw fisher, bear, a, a, as well as raccoons and a possum, a possum and a deer. So we have been seeing them routinely for three and a half years. So I don't know where they're not, but I know where they are. So, and we see them moving. So would that be of any benefit? I mean, it's real life. It's, you know, I got the pictures to prove it. Like Paul said, I don't know where else they are, but I know, you know, I, I, we have enough documentation over three and a half years to say what's in a certain area in, in South Burlington.
Yeah, I actually spent a bunch of time looking at that map and thinking about this. And, you know, I think for me, the documentation, like it, it reinforces how important it is for us to do the habitat blocks and the, the connectors, you know, because these species are here and they're living somewhere and they're moving around. But I guess like your example of your own camera kind of reinforces that those cameras don't exist every single spot all across the city. So it's hard to know, are you at a hotspot or are you just collecting more data? And does it, maybe in a spot where there is no sighting, it's just because nobody was there to see it, like.
Right, right.
One comment about that. It's Sarah Duff here. Just, just thinking, building on what Roseanne said, we, or at least scientists, naturalists, know about the ranges of certain species. So if you took Roseanne's camera as an example, as the center of the universe, we, we could certainly extrapolate with scientific help, the range of that animal all around her camera and north and south and, and so on. So, you know, I think certain conclusions can be drawn that aren't strictly based on the position of the camera.
Yeah, and that makes a lot of sense. I think my point was, I just want to make sure we're not removing a connection that exists just because we don't have to happen to have a picture.
Right, right.
That was my point.
For sure, yeah, right, right.
But it also sounds like what Ray talked about in the opening is like he would be interested, Roseanne, for sure, in seeing that because it sounds like that's what they're going to be working on, trying to.
Yeah, and, and I had been sending some of these to an organization called Keeping Track. That's around Vermont to try to find where they are. And when Sophie was still in town, Mazeroski, she actually came out and she tracked the fisher. She was tracking the fisher, its footprints. And then we saw it on our camera. So she saw where the fisher was coming, all the way from, you know, the great swamp area. But of course, now you put a road in between that. So, you know, fishers can't cross the road, as Ted had earlier said in South Point. But we know, you know, from people who do track it, know where, where the, the various species, where their habitat blocks are, you know.
And, you know, Roseanne's cameras are located in, in probably one of the busiest wildlife connectors because, you know, all the way from the woods around Meadow, Meadowwood, through her neighborhood into the park that's on the opposite side of, of.
Underwood, it goes to the Underwood Park.
Into the great swamp and all the way down eventually to the Shelburne Line. And then there's open fields from there south all the way to Shelburne Pond. I mean, it's a very critical, sadly, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to say this, Roseanne, but where your house and development is, was the one, was a major destruction of habitat block and connector all the way from Meadowwood South.
Yeah, I know.
So you should move up and.
So I know we're getting late. We're going to continue the discussion the first week of January. This has been really helpful and, you know, I think all the written comments have been really good. I think we should make sure to all read the emails and written comments that we got and the article that was sent to us before the next meeting, because I know some people didn't get to before this one. And I guess if anyone else wants to see mapped, let Paul know, like, soon.
And can we just remember, we didn't finalize our comments on that last number two that we were talking about? And maybe at minimum, like, is there a smaller, is one acre sufficient rather than three? In the, in the examples that you know of, Paul, would that be a, a smaller, would a one acre removal?
I can take a look at that.
Okay.
And Duncan, did you have something?
I just said, the, the letter that Ted referenced or the paper, where, where was that?
Paul, Paul, you sent it to, to us in the late afternoon, Paul, right?
I think it was. There was an attachment to one of the emails.
From Andrew Chalmick. Okay, all right. I'm not sure what NEPA is. I think it might be the New England Foresters, Forestry Institute, but I can confirm with Andrew on that. I was trying to figure out what that was. Thank you.
Great, well.
For the 5th of January at 7:00 PM.
Let me confirm with you all tomorrow. I'll ask about the 5th and 6th. I know that we don't, we don't want to have, as, if we can avoid conflicts, we'll try to do that, okay?
All right.
Great.
All right, everyone.
Have a great holiday.
For all of your amazing work. And if we don't see one another, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays to everyone, okay?
Happy holidays.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Been great working with you so far. Have a good holiday.
Okay, bye.
Happy New Year.